Would we please all rise to the flag, sir? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Open public meetings announcement, the New Jersey open public meetings law is enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Say County Manchester Regional High School Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published in the North Jersey Herald News, the board's official news paper on January 10, 2020, and again on October 31st, 2020. Outlining the new regulations, notice of this regular meeting indicating dates, time and place were posted for public viewing and posted on all social media platforms within the Manchester Regional High School community with the clerks and municipalities of Halden, North Halden and Prospect Park. Now be it resolved that this virtual in-person Board of Education meeting will be recorded. Public comments, public comments for any in-person virtual meeting will be conducted in the following manner. Written comments may be sent via email or written letter addressed to the board secretary and must be received by 10:00 a.m. the day of the meeting. In-person comments will be addressed and have a three-minute cap. Remote comments will be addressed when the public participant uses the raise hand feature. And please view the standard of conduct procedures for all public participation posted under the Board of Education on our website. Mr. Sarah Pili, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Eric. Mr. Barker.
Here.
Mr. Batelli.
Present.
Mr. DiMarco. Mrs. Fisher.
Here.
Mr. Fisher. Mrs. Fusco. Mr. Pinzera.
Here.
Mr. Vander Mullen.
Here.
Do I have a motion to move correspondence, please?
Almost.
Second.
Second, any questions regarding correspondence?
Yes, John, I had communicated to you this week with respect to the letter from the commission with respect to busing and you clarified it and I'm just even from your perspective, did we get the savings that they suggest that that we did up to 30%?
Yes, the, the, there is a reduction in cost from the original contracted amount.
Thank you.
Anyone else, questions? Seeing none, Mr. Sarah Pilia, please call the roll.
Mr. Pinzera.
Yes.
Mr. Batelli.
Yes.
Mr. Vander Mullen.
Yes.
Mr. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco. Ms. Eric. Mr. Barker.
Yes.
And Mrs. Fisher.
Yes. At this time.
Hold, hold, Mrs. Fisher, I don't know, John, did you notice that Mrs. Fusco is online?
No.
But she, she was muted.
I do not know if she's online. Mrs. Fusco, are you there?
She wasn't in as a host up top, but I saw her at the bottom of the participants list. Let's see if she's still there.
I see a few, so.
That's it. Okay, she might have switched over, I think that's, she was always her husband's account, but she was there a minute ago. Okay, just keep your eye open if she comes back in. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Okay, presentations at this time, holiday choir ensemble that we had.
Yes, actually, I'd like to just introduce that before Mr. Bragani plays it, so welcome everyone. And what I'd like to just state is that the MRHS Choir is proud to perform a musical piece for you this evening. There's virtual ensemble performance put together in collaboration between Ms. Marino, who is assisted with video editing, Ms. Perser Nari, our fabulous vocal teacher, supported by supervisor of the music department, Mr. Urcolani, and our incredible students have prepared a simple message for all of us this evening. Happy holidays from the MRHS Falcon family, enjoy.
We wish you a Merry Christmas, we wish you a Merry Christmas, we wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Glad tidings we bring to you and your kin, glad tidings for Christmas and a Happy New Year. We wish you a Merry Christmas, we wish you a Merry Christmas, we wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you. Very nice, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to our board member recognitions.
Thank you, Ellen. Really, for me, this is a bittersweet moment coming into the district. You're obviously one of the first people I was able to meet. And, you know, this is a very nice opportunity for say thank you and goodbye, but very difficult on the same hand for myself because I was very much looking forward to meeting and working with you. But nonetheless, I have been talking with a lot of folks in the school community in my entry to the district and really what's been clear from the beginning is that both Ellen and Dan have had a huge impact on the district. So there are really some huge shoes to fill with their child-first approach to education and we're going to miss you. So what I'd like to do is read some really nice words that'll maybe give a little bit of perspective to the school community about all the wonderful things that you've done over the years here, both Ellen and Dan, and also then a few folks I know are here to speak about you and to remember the good times and, and to speak to all the great accomplishments you've had. But why don't we start with Ellen? And what I'd like to say is that she served with distinction as a member of the Manchester Regional Board of Education for 19 years, the last 16 as the Board of Education President. Additionally, she served on the Halden Board of Ed for 21 years. On top of all that, she still found time to be a, a board member for the library in Halden for 12 years, many years as the president, and also instrumental in securing grant funding to construct the new library facility. She also was instrumental in providing open access of the library's collections and technology to Manchester students. And there's one thing I know about Ellen, it's been always about the students in every conversation that we've had. Mrs. Fisher is a longtime member and supporter of the Halden School PTA and Manchester PTSA and a lifetime member of the New Jersey PTA. She's had leadership roles in the Cedar Cliff United Methodist Church countless years as a school, Halden School Class Mother, fundraising for all the sports that her children were involved with softball, baseball, roller hockey, and also participating in the Boy Scout Troop 20. Ms. Fisher had a very interesting role, serving in both Board of Educations in Halden and Manchester simultaneously and was instrumental in initiating a lot of shared services for administrative academic and support staff that saved millions of taxpayer dollars. Ms. Fisher has been recognized by the New Jersey School Boards Association and New Jersey Department of Ed and been asked to present workshops regarding all of her vast knowledge. She's also an alumni of Manchester and has attended hundreds of sporting events, school plays and concerts. Once a falcon, always a falcon could really ring true here for Ellen. And to close here, the Say County Manchester Regional High School District Board of Education does hereby extend its heartfelt thanks and gratitude to Ellen Fisher for her exemplary efforts and dedication on behalf of the students of Manchester and the residents of the boroughs of Halden, North Halden and Prospect Park. Thank you, Ellen. Excellent.
A second. I just want to, one, one more thing, just on behalf of the Board of Education, the board, current board, give you a little bit of a picture of the school. But a little bit of something that, yeah.
Thank you so much. Oh, well, you know what, how about if I just say that all over again? How about if I just say that all over again? Of course, my last meeting has to be, you know, okay. Thinking back on my 19 years here at Manchester Regional, I'd like to thank all the board members I've worked with in the past, some of whom have showed me that service to your community as the role of board member benefits not only your own children, but all the students of the district. Many thanks to the administrators I've worked with, namely Dr. Ray Quoc, Mrs. Jeanette Makis, Mr. John Sarah Pilia, Dr. Rich Ney, Dr. Miguel Hernandez, Mr. Tim Smith Hart, Mr. John Coviallo and Mr. Gary Labisco, who not only showed us shared services work within our towns, but where we were a role model for the state of New Jersey as well. And that's really in part to a lot of hard work on the boards and Mr. and Mrs. Makis and, and Dr. Quoc to get us into that mood. We've saved millions of dollars for the taxpayers. We must all work together to make our school community a better place for all the students. To all the teachers and staff here at Manchester, I thank you for your dedication to the students here. You are true heroes of the district. When I made the decision not to seek reelection, it wasn't an easy one, but I feel that spending time with my grandchildren is truly what I want to do in life. I thank my family, especially my children, and I'm so glad that I got to serve with them, both as student representatives here at Manchester. I'm proud to say each election I participated in was a highly successful one and one that gave me the opportunity to serve both Manchester Regional High School and Halden Public School District, which bridged the gap between both districts. I'm also proud to say that I'm the first woman alumni who has served as president for 16 years here at Manchester and I'm very proud to be an alumni of Manchester Regional High School. I'll forever cherish all the friendships made here at Manchester and this will always be my home. I'll always be a Falcon, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ellen.
Sure, if you want to go, Dan?
No, go ahead.
Okay. And the next one is Dan Batelli. I'm going to just say a few words about Dan before I, I read our resolution here. I've known Dan probably a better part of my life. He's been what I call the face of Halden. He's always had Halden at heart, he's done everything for his children and the other children of the Halden District. Dan, I really appreciate everything you've done. And it says, whereas Daniel Batelli has served with distinction as a member of the Say County Manchester Regional High School District Board of Education for seven years, and whereas Mr. Batelli additionally served as a member of the Halden Board of Education for 18 years, including several terms as president, and whereas Mr. Batelli also served 16 years as a councilman in the borough of Halden, including 12 years as police commissioner, three years as fire's commissioner, and six years as emergency management coordinator, and four years as a member of the Manchester Utilities Authority. And whereas Mr. Batelli was a volunteer member of the Halden Tribe Ambulance Corps for five years and a marshal with the Halden Police Department for nine years. And whereas Mr. Batelli gave 24 years of service to the Halden Police Athletic League as a member, trustee, fundraiser and coach impacting the lives of thousands of young athletes, not just from Halden, but also the other Manchester communities. And whereas Daniel Batelli will be retiring from the Manchester Board at the end of December 2020. Now therefore be it resolved that the Say County Manchester Regional High School District Board of Education does hereby extend its heartfelt thanks and gratitude to Daniel Batelli for his exemplary efforts and dedication on behalf of the students of Manchester and the residents of the boroughs of Halden, North Halden and Prospect Park. Congratulations, Dan, thank you so much.
I just want to say that, oh. I wish, I wish I was there with all you guys. This pandemic is taking a toll on a lot of people, made things very difficult. But my heart is there. I am very humbled and honored that the Manchester Board recognizes, recognizes myself and Ellen for the work that we've done. Children are our priority. I've been in Halden for the better part of my life. I've seen a lot of good kids, a lot of good athletes. It's, it was an honor to be part of their lives. Serving on the Manchester Board was very fulfilling for me. Serving on the local board was as fulfilling for me. As I said in the past, I, I think we have the best teaching staff in Passaic County. We have dedicated teachers, we have dedicated staff members, we have dedicated administrators. And I thank them very much for all their work, hard work that they do each and every day. And going through this pandemic, it's, it's not making it any easier. Children are our priority. They're the, the future of our country, the future of our towns. We, we need to make sure that we give them the best education that we can give them and that is the duty of the Board as of education to make sure that that is accomplished. I commend the board members for their efforts and for their time. Again, we all get that big salary, so you know, it makes it easy for us to do this, right? But it's rewarding, I, I've been rewarded every day. You know, I, I want to thank yous all again, I want to thank my family, because they put up with a lot, especially throughout the years. I've been very active in Halden and I think the biggest accomplishment was the camaraderie that I brought between the three communities, North Halden, Halden, Prospect Park with the sports programs. We, we took kids who were adversarries in sports and brought them together and fulfilled championship teams throughout the course of the years. We've had a lot of good athletes that came out of Manchester, past and present, and I'm sure the future is bright for them, once we can get over this obstacle. Once again, I, I want to thank everybody, I want to thank the administration, I want to thank the girls in the office because believe it or not, without them, the boards and administration wouldn't be as enlightened as they are. So I want to thank each and every one of them. God bless everybody. And now I'm just going to hopefully enjoy my retirement, thank you so much.
Thank you, Dan.
Ellen, there's a few things that I'd like to present right now, if you could maybe just give us a moment here.
On behalf of Manchester Regional High School District, a little something to remember everyone by, a wonderful picture. Of course, the wonderful words written about you and all the dedicated years you've put into the district and a thank you note as well.
Thank you so much.
Time's been short, thank you so much for everything.
Thank you so much.
You will be missed.
Thanks.
I'll tell Dan the same in a moment, but if you can maybe get a picture here, I'll hold this guy up here. I know, same thing. That's a good habit, isn't it? That's a good habit. Thank you.
And Mr. Batelli, we have some items for you as well, a nice framed picture of the campus, a remembrance of the kind words that were written about you and all the dedicated service you provided and a thank you note as well. So we'd like to thank you once again for all your service and enjoy your retirement, as you said, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labisco, thank you so much.
Now, there were a few people that couldn't make it today. Unfortunately, to, to express their gratitude for all your service, I would just like to read one right now and this is from our attorney Rod Harra. He said, "It has been a pleasure and privilege to work with you all these years. No matter how difficult the issues have been, your leadership skills, commitment to the district that contributed to successful outcomes. You're a consummate professional who will be missed. On behalf of Stephen and I, we wish you the very best of luck in all your future endeavors." There are also some folks in the audience I know that would like to say some words as well about all your service. So I do think it'd be important if we took that time now to recognize some of those folks.
Yeah, Mr. Labisco and Madam President, if you don't mind, I would like to make a motion that we open the floor to the public hearing. However, at this time, just for comments on Ellen and Dan, we will have the regular public session on the agenda in a few minutes after that. But I think rather than mix the two subjects together, it would be best. And we do have some people that are waiting just for Ellen and Dan. So I would move that we open the floor
Agreed.
for public comments and while doing so, well, I'll make that motion, if you have a second?
Second.
Go forward, all in favor? John? All in favor, work?
In favor?
Yes.
Any extensions? I mean, any, any notes?
Okay, while people are logging on, I would remind them to either use the feature of raise your hand so that our tech director can identify those that want to speak, or just type in a little quick note in the chat box so that Pat can identify those. There are a couple of people besides Rod Harra, Mayor Stan Pong reached out to me today to express his regrets for not being able to be here tonight, they do have a borough council meeting. But he extended his best wishes to Dan and Ellen and thanked them for their service to the borough. Also, Lucy De Nova, a member of the North Halden Board of Education, reached out, also expressed her thanks for your service and best wishes. And also, Ellen, while we're waiting, you may, Ron, I know that you had a call today from Trenton, from a very important person, and I think you may want to relay that to the board and to the public while we're doing the
Yeah, actually, I talked to Ray Feinsad this evening, who couldn't be here, but he called to thank me for all of my years of service and it was really nice to, to hear from him and other people around the state to wish me well and I really appreciate it, thank you so much. And I see that I have something here from Ray Martinez, that he says, "Thank you for all your support and great work. You made a significant difference in the lives of so many, all the best from Ray Martinez", who was a former councilman in Halden. I appreciate that, thank you, Ray. Is there anyone else?
Mr. Mr. Jeffrey Fisher would like to say a few words.
And for anybody who does know who that is, that's my son.
Uh, yeah, hi, Mrs. Fisher, her mom, how do we like to go about this? Uh, I, and Mr. Batelli, first off, I just want to say congratulations on retirement, you know, after all the years that you've served town of Halden, you absolutely deserve it. Uh, and mom, congratulations, you're done, that's it, you know, of, uh, all the all the time that you, that you said, "This is your last time, this is your last time, I'm not running anymore." You kept going back because you knew what was the right thing to do and you knew you were, the reason you were doing it. But you're done now and you did well for everybody. I had an honor, the honor of serving with you on the board, so I got to see you firsthand. And I know that you will probably miss the most, rather than helping the kids, is being able to gavel dad in public. So
Absolutely.
But, um, but yeah, I know, I know that you, you definitely, you served your time there well and everybody, even though some people may not say it, everybody appreciated everything that you did for the school and the students and the teachers and everything for the town. And we love you all and I guarantee you, everybody's going to miss you. And, you know, yeah, definitely, it was, it was a pleasure to see what you could do in person and I love you and I'll see you at Christmas. Oh, and happy birthday, happy birthday, it's your birthday on Saturday, so.
Thank you, thank you, okay. Thanks, Ben.
Uh, Ms. Bernadette Orsita would like to speak.
Bernadette, are you there?
I am, Ellen, how are you, my friend?
Good, how are you?
Well, I'm, I'm just a little bit in shock here, like who could even believe that we're at this point in our walk together at Manchester. 13 years ago, we started working side by side and you have always been such example of excellence, steadfastness and commitment. You've always distinguished yourself as someone who will always fight the good fight for our kids. You've always weighed all of the options before making decisions and working to help all Manchester students in every arena. I have loved working with you, I have enjoyed asking for things that sometimes we weren't sure we would get, but sometimes we did, but I always appreciated your honesty and your loyalty and your desire to put the students of Manchester first in everything you do. Um, I thank you for showcasing our students, thank you for giving me the opportunity over the years for the multiple activities that, you know, people didn't want and yet you guys opened the doors and we did them and the kids were excited and they loved it, so thank you for that. I can't imagine Ellen, our board, without you. You've done a lot of great things, made a lot of changes, worked hard to make sure that all of our kids know someone cared about them and I totally appreciate you. You know, you could have just been a board president, but instead you have been the breath of life to our school students and staff and for that, my friend, you will be greatly missed, greatly. Have a
Thank you, Bernadette, I really appreciate it, thanks so much.
Uh, Mr. Dr. Miguel Hernandez.
Ah, Miguel. Hello, are you there?
Ellen, thank you, thank you all for this opportunity to speak. Well, I wish everyone a wonderful holiday and I hope everyone's safe and healthy under these pandemic times. But as far as Dan, Dan, Batelli and Ellen Fisher, it's been a pleasure and a privilege to work with both of you. I really, really enjoyed my time there at Manchester Regional High School. I believe that, you know, I always felt that both you, both of you have done this job with the utmost integrity and professionalism. And I still to this day wonder why you would spend so many years on Board of Education. You know, I know the thankless job and you don't get paid, it's a volunteer work, but you know, through your actions and through your words, I know that your heart was right in the right place and it was all about the kids. And I appreciated that in my five years there. I appreciate the collaboration that we had working together. I appreciate the respect that we had towards each other. And I really like the fact that you've always kept what was best for kids, number one. I wish you both all the best during your retirement. And I thank you for your service to the kids of Heldon, North Heldon and Prospect Park. And once again, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Hernandez. It means a lot. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Hernandez. Thank you.
Ms. Laura Fisher Lefkowitz.
Laura Fisher Lefkowitz, my daughter.
Hi, Mom. I just have, want to say congratulations. Ben pretty much said everything that I was going to say. I was the first one that got to serve with you on the board and only for two months. But I do have two very special people who stayed up very late to watch Mimi and Papa. So, I mean, can you say, "Thank you, Mimi?" Good job, Mimi.
Thank you.
Katie, can you say, "Good job, Mimi"? Katie doesn't want to say anything right now.
No, that's okay.
I'm just, I'm very proud of you and you've been an inspiration to so many people. You've been able to really show what it means to, as you like to say, not run the school, but make sure the school runs well. So thank, yes, thank you so much for giving so many people opportunities that they wouldn't have had anywhere else by going to Manchester. And remember, hashtag, "Once a Falcon, Always a Falcon." We love you.
Thanks, Laura.
Thank you.
Ms. Judith Bassford.
Judy. Judy, who's the president of the County Association and also vice president of Clifton Board of Education.
Yes, and congratulations to Mr. Battelli. I don't know you, but your retirement and thank you for your dedication to your district. Ellen, you have been a, you have a long, long, rich resume as a school board member, which is service above self. So I wanted to just pop on tonight and thank you for your dedication to children. I'm here on a personal note and a professional note as well, as a friend that I have found in you through the years of being on the Passaic County School Boards Association. And the reason why I serve that position is some, some part to do with your advice and your, your, your knowledge and your inspiration to go for it. And, and I have to thank you for that. And in my fourth year as being the president of the Passaic County School Boards Association, you have been an asset to our group. Whenever we asked you to do anything, you stepped to the plate. Our organization in your local district will not be the same without you. Whoever, whomever is filling your shoes, there are big shoes to fill. So I want to wish you blessings and health and good wishes in your retirement. Thank you, Ellen, for being there for us when we needed you. And the community should thank you for being there when they needed you as well. It's time for you to be with your grand, the grands and enjoy every moment of it. What a blessing. I love you so much.
I love you too. Thanks, Judy. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
The Battelli family would like to say something.
Go ahead. Are you there?
Hi, I just wanted to say congratulations to Ellen and my father. I have to say, I don't know very many people that are out there that dedicated so much of their life to their town and their schools and all the kids and the people. It's truly inspiring, I have to say. My dad's my hero and I appreciate everything he's done for, you know, everyone. And I've been around this town my whole life and to see him get to this point where, you know, he's done so many things and now he's getting to a point where he can relax and, you know, kind of enjoy things for himself. I'm really proud of him. So I love you, Dad, and congratulations.
That's great.
Love you too.
Ms. Catherine Kazan.
Kathy, are you there?
Hi, Ellen. Yes, I.
Hi, my name is. Kazan is actually the board president of Wayne Board of Education.
Yes, and, and vice president of the county. So I won't repeat everything Judy Bassford had to say because that's exactly where I know Ellen from as well. And congratulations and happy retirement to you too, Mr. Battelli. But I just wanted to tell you, Ellen, that you absolutely are an inspiration. I'm glad we're Facebook because I can still keep up with your goings on. And I'm so jealous that you're going to have free Thursday nights. But is there any reason why you're leaving Jeff behind? I, just kidding, Jeff, we love you, both of you. I mean, the wealth of knowledge between you two could fill books for days. And every board member should reach out to you for guidance on issues whenever you have any sort of question about decisions you're going to make or just in general, because you, you carry a wealth of experience that shouldn't just disappear because you've decided to finish out your day-to-day activities. And I hope you have a very happy holiday, everyone. I, I hope you enjoy your grandchildren and I'll see you on Facebook, Ellen. Thank you so much for your dedication. And same to you, Mr. Battelli.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Mr. Ray Quack.
Quack.
Quack, sorry.
Dr. Quack. Hello?
Ellen, how are you?
Ray, how are you?
Now, I can't believe you're going to do this.
Yes. I'm doing.
I had the best job in New Jersey in the years 2000s through 2010, working with you and the other board members. And it was a pleasure. I can't thank you enough for that opportunity. And if you remember, during those years, we did some unusual things. And we were one of the first school districts to do the shared service agreements. And we sold computer services so the district's actually making a profit. So you gave the opportunity to that, our school district and to our kids to do something that was really special. And for that, we really thank you. People seldom remember how, how you arrive or people arrive on the scene, but they always remember how you leave. And you have inducted yourself with grace and dignity in an often unthankable job. But you left Manchester a better place and for that, you are to be congratulated. Ellen, thank you for everything.
Thank you, Ray. I really appreciate it and hoping you're enjoying your retirement too.
Great, that was very good reception from the sailboat.
Anybody who doesn't know, Dr. Quack was our superintendent here. And he was the superintendent who started when we started shared services here. Thanks, Ray.
Also, Mr. Dr. Quack was a reactive leader with the library board in Heldon.
Yes.
And giving the library on the third floor of the municipal building and then giving grant money in order to do that. He was a private force at that. I hope that the.
Thanks, Ray.
I have Ms. Jeanette Makis.
Hello, Jeanette.
Hi.
How are you?
I didn't think this day would ever happen. Like Ray, I want to thank you for the opportunity to work with Manchester, work in Manchester and Heldon. And as Ray said and you said, we were the first shared service agreement district before superintendent and a business administrator. And I will tell you that in my association, I got a lot of flack on that because people thought that I was taking somebody's job. But it has worked out well. And I have to say, because I do work with John throughout the year as part of my responsibilities as the, as a county executive business administrator, that John has continued that, that work. But I can remember the day that you were elected, the first year you were elected president of the Board of Manchester. And within weeks, you had been at, I can't even tell you how many countless school functions that you attended as the board president. You are an impressive woman. And you have contributed a tremendous amount of your life to Manchester and Heldon. And your family is to be congratulated because in the course of that, they too made sacrifices. I was a board member for 18 years, so I know exactly the challenges that you face, that all of you face as board members. You should all be congratulated. I tell the story of the day I went into the supermarket for a dozen eggs and spent 45 minutes at the egg section because some member of the public had something to say about the Wayne School District. But I thank you for the opportunity. I loved working in Manchester. I loved working in Heldon. You have some of the best teachers. You have the best students. I continue to look for how Manchester has done on the sporting field. And you have fielded some really good teams lately. I wish you nothing but the best. I wish you joy in, in being now with your grandchildren. Their, mine are older now. There is no greater joy than having grandchildren who you can give back to their parents and send them home. I, I, I truly admire you, Ellen, for the person you are, the work you've done and the commitment you made to education. And I wish you many more years and wish you well.
Thanks, Jeanette. I really appreciate it. It means a lot coming from you. Thank you so much.
Ms. Heather Rasso.
Is that a Rasso?
First off, Mrs. Fisher, I'd like to congratulate you.
Thank you.
Somebody wants to say hello. Say hello, baby Papa.
Hi, love it, Papa.
Hi. Hi, baby.
I am here with my husband, my children and my grandson. And we are so proud to be able to call my father. He has dedicated so many years to Heldon and to the school board.
Why, Papa?
He's now becoming a snowbird. He awaited for years and years for him and my mom and.
Why, Papa?
I don't know, Ben.
And cannot wait for you to enjoy your retirement because you've given to so many people. It's time for you and for my mother. And we love you. Say bye to Papa.
Love you guys. Love you, Donovan. See you soon. That's my great grandson.
Thanks. Thanks, Heather.
I have Ms. Jennifer Moser.
Jen.
Hi.
Hello.
I just want to thank you, Ms. Fisher. I can't remember a time growing up with sports or any activities in town where you were, my parents were a part of. And Mr. Fisher, you both deserve time to enjoy your grandkids. So thank you for your time. And Daddy, I can't thank you enough for all you've done for the family over the years, both you and Mommy.
Love you, baby.
Love you too. And it's about time you guys get to enjoy. The girls want to say something.
We love you, Papa.
We love you.
Love you too.
Thank you.
Oh, that's a nice, thanks, Jen. Anything else, Ken?
Mr. Ronaldo Martinez would like to speak.
Ray.
Thank you. I appreciate them very, very much on this wonderful evening, somewhat bittersweet. I want to thank you both, Ellen and, and Dan, for your contributions, your commitment and your dedication to the students and the people of Heldon. You've given so much of yourselves and I know what, you know, public services. Your friendship and for being a brother over the years. I am proud of both of you, you, Dan and Ellen. And I wish you both health, a long life and Godspeed. Be well, my friends, and take care. And thank you again.
Thank you.
All you've done. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ray. Thank you, Michael.
If anyone else would like to speak, please raise your hand in the chat or message us in the chat window.
I think you have Mayor Penditor on there who knows both Dan and Ellen for many years, both personally and professionally. And if you could bring him up, that might be good. Ken Penditor?
Hello.
Hey, Ken.
Hey, Kenny.
How are you?
Guys, congratulations to both of you.
Thanks.
Let me, let me say, let me start out with making a few comments about Dan. I've known Dan for many years. I've worked alongside of him in various capacities. But you don't realize what someone means to a community until a moment like this. You've given many years of service to our community in many needed positions and you've performed admirably. People don't realize the level of volunteerism made by our neighbors and our friends. When I look at the years of commitment by Dan, seven years on the Manchester Board, 18 years on the Heldon Board, as well as being president, 16 years as a councilman, a police commissioner, a fire commissioner, emergency management coordinator, the Manchester Utility Authority, the Tri-Borough Ambulance Corps. He was a marshal with the Heldon Police Department and a trustee and coach for the PAL in Heldon for 24 years. What a, what a, wow, what a local resume, a lifetime of service. And you made it look easy, but we know it takes a special person to bear when other people need you. Once again, I know how demanding a position of leadership is and I can say that you have set a standard for others to follow. You're always there in support of the Borough of Heldon. And your energy and dedication have made Heldon a better place.
Thank you, Kenny.
I'll be calling you a friend and your service will be missed. Well done. Enjoy the, enjoy the retirement. Ellen, are you there?
I'm here.
All right, you've given, of course, you've given many years of service as well. You've made a difficult job look easy. And again, I know how demanding a position of leadership is. And I can say you've done very well. Again, your resume is unbelievable. 19 years on the Manchester Board, 16 years as president, 21 years on the Heldon Board, unbelievable. 12 years on the Heldon Library Board, where you played an important role in getting our new library up and running. Your leadership at the church, Cub Scouts, Boy Scouts, the Heldon and Manchester PTSA. You can't count the hours that you've spent in service to your community. You've always been there to support us as a special resource and your energy and dedication have made Heldon a better place. But now it's your time for grandchildren and family. Don't look back. I think it will be difficult to find another Ellen Fisher. If I'm going to war, Ellen, you're coming with me.
Thanks, Kenny.
Your service will be missed. I love you.
Love you too.
Well done to both of you. God bless everybody. Have a Merry Christmas and a healthy new year and Godspeed.
Thanks, Kenny.
God bless you, Kenny.
Thank you, Kenny.
I have Ms. Kathy Gonzalez.
Hi. I just wanted to say it was, it was an honor to, to serve with Ellen and Danny on the Board of Ed when I was on for my few years. But when I wasn't on the board, I just wanted to know that I always knew that our schools were in good hands because of the two of you. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome.
Anything else, Ken?
If anyone else would like to speak, please raise your hand or message us in the chat window.
Okay, seeing none? Clear, Pat? None? Okay.
What else in the public? I just very briefly would like to thank Ellen and Dan for all their years of service, not just on the school boards, but everything.
but everything that they've done for the, for the towns, not just Halden, but all three towns. And I'm not going to repeat everything that everybody else has said, just that like Ken said, it's going to be hard to, hard shoes to fill, so good luck in your retirement. And John Seraphilia, just make sure she doesn't take that camel home.
Thank you. Thanks. Do we have a motion to close, public?
Second.
Going back over to our prior minutes that we passed over before, do I have a motion to move prior?
We had to slow the motion on the presentation resolution for the two board members.
I'm sorry, what?
We didn't vote on the resolutions.
Oh, okay. Want to call the roll on that?
Yes.
John, those resolutions for Dan and Ellen?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Mr. Vander Mullen?
Yes.
Mr. Penzera?
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco? Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Barka?
Yes.
Mrs. Fusco?
Yes.
Ms. Eric? Mr. Battelli?
Yes.
And Mrs. Fisher?
Yes. Now moving over to our prior minutes, do I have a motion?
John moves.
I'll second it.
Any questions regarding prior minutes? Seeing none, Mr. Seraphilia, please call the roll.
Mr. Battelli?
Yes.
Mr. Barka?
Yes.
Mr. Vander Mullen?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher? Mr. Penzera?
Yes.
Ms. Eric? Mr. DiMarco? Mrs. Fusco?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes. Moving into our reports. My last report will be that 2020 has been very challenging for Manchester as well as everyone in our country and in the world. Hoping that 2021 will bring us closer to finding everyone to be healthy and to opening up our schools again. It's been a pleasure, as I said, serving the Manchester Regional High School District. And I give the challenge to everyone here who's left to make sure that you always make the right decision for each and every student here in the district. Thank you so much. I'm going to actually turn it over right now. Is our student representative here this evening? No.
Yeah, yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. All right.
Okay. Um. So the Student Council is planning the first Winter Virtual Spirit Week for the next week, starting Monday, December fourteenth, and ending Friday, December eighteenth, pending board approval, of course. The themes will be Sports Day on Monday, Snapchat Filter Day on Tuesday, Color Day on Wednesday, Ugly Holiday Sweater Day on Thursday, and a Falcon Friday on Friday. Participating students and teachers will have the opportunity to take a selfie each day and send their pictures to Mr. Taveras for the opportunity to be featured on MRHS social media. I'd also like to add that the Student Council would like to congratulate our very own Vice President Sandra Navarro, who was just recently accepted with a full ride from the University of Pennsylvania. We are extremely, we are extremely proud of you, Sandra. Keep up the good work. And we would also like to thank Ms. Fisher and Ms. Battelli for their use of dedication and service at MRHS. We wish you all the best.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
No problem.
Mr. Lubisco.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher, and once again, thank you, Dan and Ellen, for your service. And as you said, this will be your last of your reports. This will be my first. So we'll bookend it like that, but first of all, I just would like to thank everybody in the school community for the warm welcome in my first couple of weeks here at Manchester. It really has been a whirlwind, but a very well-supported one by all the kind folks here. Everyone's welcomed me. Everyone's been very helpful, and everyone has really allowed me to ask a lot of questions to start learning. And as all the information that I posted out there, you know, I really want to learn as much as I can, as I said in quotes there, hit the ground learning is my goal here. So, you know, I would just like to comment on a couple of things that have happened so far and what I've been doing, and then also some things on the horizon. So first of all, you know, this was some great news that Christian just shared with us, and thank you, Christian, for presenting there. You know, the full scholarship to Penn from Mr. Navarro is quite an accomplishment, so congratulations. I think that needed another comment. Secondly, in terms of my entry here to the district, you know, you know, it is an organized one for a reason because I want to learn as much as I can and use my time as efficiently as I can so I can gather a true understanding of the district, the school community, the needs, and the direction that we all can work together towards. And really, it's a perfect time to say because it came after, big thank you to Dan and Ellen who served for so many years, but this is about the children, and that's what I'm here to do is provide the best education for them. So in, in phase one of that entry, really what I'm doing is I'm communicating to the school community what I'm doing. I'm introducing myself to as many folks as I can, and really, I've been able to meet with quite a few folks in free-sending districts in terms of leadership positions, and I'm going to continue to do so in hopes to speak with as many as I can before we go on Christmas break and then continue after. With that said, I've also been working collaboratively with the administration, who have all been very helpful, Mr. Covielo, Mr. Seraphilia, and of course, Dr. Hernandez, who was very helpful in meeting with me and helping me to understand, you know, his time here. What I'm going to be doing in phase two when we get back from winter recess is really conducting follow-up sessions with all the board members. I want to sit down with them and speak very candidly with them about, you know, their, their time here, their dedication, and their, their hopes and dreams, and of course, their, you know, where things are right now and get an honest look at. I've also met with Ms. Kathy Hellaway, Hellow, excuse me, to talk about our transition workshop, which will be happening after the New Year. Really excited to do that and sit down and roll our sleeves up and get going there. And also, there's some other folks after the, the winter recess that I want to meet with, and that's sitting more formally with the school administration, leadership in the association, and some other school community members to, again, continue to expand my understanding of the district. Next week, I'll have my first cabinet meeting with the administration to really start to get to know them better. And in the meantime, as we approach our February third reopening, what we've been doing is trying to increase our capacity. And Mr. Covielo, myself, the two assistant principals, the nurse, we took the online John Hopkins contact tracing training to begin a better understanding of that because we really want to understand as much as we can about COVID, and what we need to know here is the school will keep people safe. We also rolled out and are producing questionnaires for those reopenings. We're going to have a restart committee meeting upcoming. And we also met with the association regarding winter sports. In terms of what's going on around us in Passaic County, you know, at our roundtable, I was able to find out of eleven districts that responded, six are in hybrid and five are fully virtual in the neighborhood here. So there's some folks that are still coming person to school, and there's some that are home doing it virtually like we are. And some things that have been going on with the students, and I really, again, I spoke to Ms. Navarro. That was great news to hear. You can find online our honor roll and really students that have been excelling in the first marking period. I'll tell you what, that takes a lot of discipline, a lot of personal discipline to stay focused when you're at home with all the distractions that come with it to be an honor roll student. So congratulations to them, and of course, that good news that we'll put together about current and alumni students that is available online. If you haven't looked at that, please do so. That's, you know, wonderful to see how people are excelling there. The only other thing I really talked about, I mentioned winter sports, and NJSEA has kicked that into basically the middle of January. Of course, that could be revisited by the state, you know, if data does tell them that. We have posted and announced our educator and educational specialist of the year, Ms. Megan Allen and Cynthia Miller. So congratulations again to them, and we are keeping up with all of our drill requirements as per the state. Those have not been waived, and we're continuing to do so. So those are just some of the updates that are going on, some of the things that I've been doing as I've been getting grounded here. And I want to thank everybody again, and I'll certainly be reaching out to a lot of the folks that are here at this meeting, both up on the stage here, but then also in the audience. So I look forward to listening and learning from all of you, and thank you.
All right. Can you hear me? I, I'd like to reiterate what a lot of people said here tonight and congratulate Ellen and Dan. I've had the pleasure of working with both of them, both here and at Halden, and I know we've done a lot of good work together. I can see it, you know, every time I walk through this building, walk through the Halden Elementary School. So even though you won't be here, you won't be forgotten because your memories are kind of all over this place. Thank you. And yes, you guys both definitely deserve your retirements. Okay, I told Ellen at the last meeting, at the Halden meeting, you know, having, watching Twins all day is not much of a retirement. I can speak from personal experience on that, but the good thing, like I said, it's, you know, my sister is obviously friends with Ellen's daughter, so and obviously Jen works in the office, so it's not that, I won't be hearing updates from both of them on how things are going with you guys, and I'm sure it'll go both ways. So I wanted to talk about the resolutions on the agenda tonight. We have several on that I wanted to touch on. We are looking to utilize SFA funds in regards to Title III. We are looking to approve a speech therapist. We had initially had a, set up a shared service with the Halden Board of Education to handle our speech therapy needs. That employee from Halden is currently out on leave. Rather than, Halden is not looking to hire somebody right now. They've been looking to outsource it. For the time being, we are looking to do the same here at Manchester. We are also on the agenda tonight approving, and I know it's called security. You know, we couldn't necessarily come up with a, the great title for it. You know, it's the person that's doing the temperature checks, you know, I want to say crowd control for board meetings. Obviously, there is, in the time of COVID, we have to be cognizant of the fact that temperatures of, of staff, or people attending the meetings, it's not just board members. When the governor allowed participation from the public to come to meetings, we needed to make sure, you know, obviously, like we do with the students, like we do with the teachers, we want to make sure that everybody's safe. We spoke about this in finance. Well, you know, we had somebody, you know, doing it on staff. We are going to be looking with, to the town, as well as to our outsourced security vendor to see if they can provide us pricing as well to provide somebody at the meetings. But like I said, the work is basically to do temperature checks, as also to make sure that, as we spoke about at the beginning of the meeting, if you didn't check in prior to the meeting, you know, we have your, if you do come to the meeting as a member of the public, I'm not really sure if we can really prevent somebody from coming in. But we do want to make sure that they don't have a temperature, that they fill out a sheet that explains, you know, whether or not they've had symptoms or anything like that. On the agenda tonight, we do have also looking to approve our district performance review, which is part of CUSAC. Now, CUSAC may not, I mean, we were up for CUSAC this year. There's a strong rumor that we are perhaps not going to be a part of a review this year. I know that's been kicked around at the state. There's actually a bill before the governor right now. If, if the bill passes, I believe we would be delayed three years. As you can see on the DPR, we passed four out of the five indicators. The only one that we didn't, and passing is an eighty percent score. The only one that we didn't was in regards to instruction, and that's due to our test scores. If you look at the backup in regards to the scoring. Obviously, Mr. Lubisco is going to be coming up with a plan in regards to improving our test scores. You know, that's part of, I believe, his, you know, phased plan of coming into the district, you know, assessing what we have and as well as looking to improve, although it is going to be rather difficult to see market improvement this year simply because of the fact that we are currently virtual, and even if we, when we do come back, it will be a hybrid model. On the agenda tonight, we are also looking to do an approved technology plan. It's actually something that we were a little bit behind on. As you can see, the plan covers this, you know, current year, work that was done last year, and work that we're going to, purchases and whatnot that we're going to be looking to do in the 2021, 22 school year. There has obviously been some consultation between Technology Department and the school administration. On the agenda, we're also looking for approval on the security grant. This is reimbursement for our district's compliance with the Lissa's law. As you recall, we have done several purchases of security upgrades to the school district. Those upgrades were eligible for reimbursement from the state through a grant, which is what we are applying for right now. On the agenda, we're also looking for approval of non-public spending of security funds for Mary Help. Once again, we are a flow-through. This is money that comes into us but is spent by Mary Help. So in essence, we act as the business office of Mary Help. You can also see we had revised busing contracts on, and that's something I'm going to talk about a little bit later. But this is obviously due to the fact that we are living currently through a pandemic, and some of the routes are not being currently run. Other items that I wanted to touch on. If you guys like Kathy Hello, you're going to see a lot of her because on January seventh, we reached out to her. She had mentioned, I think, at one of our meetings that she provided ethics training. So being cost-conscious, rather than bringing in our attorney, paying for those fees, Kathy is able to do that for us, part of our overall dues. She said it would be about a thirty-minute presentation, which I think is an hour and a half less than Rob's usual discussion, so. You know, it's cheaper and it's quicker, so I thought that's a win-win for us. We are in the process of beginning putting together next year's budget. We did, a board approved the budget schedule. We are, I've consulted with Mr. Lubisco in regards to budget sheets that will be distributed to school administration. That will actually be one of the things that are discussed at next week's cabinet meeting. There is additional funding coming in for the CARES Act. In total, the school district is getting eighty thousand dollars, although some of that, I believe, might have to go to the non-public school. When I looked at the allocation today, it didn't have that broken down, but it looked like if, if the percentages are where they were for the first part of the allocation, I think we'll get about sixty percent of that, which would be about forty-eight thousand dollars. As I spoke, I did speak about the CUSAC. The audit was also pushed back. Typically, tonight would be the meeting where our auditors presented. The audits have been pushed back. The audit sum is due till January, and I believe the reports aren't due till the end of January. So we will be having a presentation by our auditors and speaking with them, you know, obviously, we spoke about the extra money at the last board meeting. I believe we're going to only have one or two findings that were minor in nature. And findings are obviously just things that they found that we need to improve upon in regards to the operations of the district. I left in the correspondence, the response that we got back from the ESC. We spoke about this in finance today, and I believe I sent this email out or went out to you guys today or this afternoon. A concern that we have, if you look at our PCTI numbers, we have a very small twelfth grade class that is graduating out the last two years. If you look at the ninth grade and the tenth grade on, on the sheets that were sent to you, we had anywhere from a hundred and five to a hundred and sixteen students. The twelfth grade is about sixty-five. If we assume something along the lines of acceptance to where the numbers were, like I said, the last two years, we could see anywhere from a forty to fifty kid increase, which forty to fifty on PCTI tuition would be something along the lines of four hundred and forty to five hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase in cost. So that's something to keep on the radar, and when we're putting So that's something to keep on the radar and when we're putting together the budget for next year. We do have a sign-up that I have to hand out for the NSBA Equity Symposium, which is, I believe, on February 10th. And last but not least, in speaking about budgets, we actually did some projections in regards to this year. Again, looking at the fact that we haven't opened school for in-person learning. It is resulting in savings throughout the budget. And the savings are enough that we can look to put back one or two of the projects even that we had to cut when we put together, when we had initially made revisions to the budget. And what I am, we are discussing and we might be looking to do is do, and maybe not all of it, but at least some of it, revisions, not revisions, renovations to the fitness center. Given where the money is being accumulated within the budget, we would be able to look to purchase many of the fitness center items that we had initially presented to the board as well as the flooring and as well as some other improvements with that in the fitness center. Again, this is something that was part of our initial budget for 2020, 21 that was forced to be cut when we had the state aid to balance it out. But as I've said, with the non-opening of school, we've saved money on transportation costs. There's also been some savings in regards to out-of-district tuitions. And like I said, there's other savings throughout the budget. You know, obviously, electric costs are coming in less than expected. Utilizing the CARES money has freed up some money within our maintenance budget. So we're looking at the possibility of bringing to the board for approval at the next meeting, some of those purchases for the fitness center. Again, that was something that was part of the 2020, 21 school year. We've also spoken about the possibility of ordering additional Chromebooks. And speaking from experience, as the shared BA in Halden, we lucked out when we purchased our Chromebooks. We got the order in, I think, before the big rush because we were able to get the Chromebooks in over the summer. The Halden Board of Ed, I think, made their PO about a month or two later, and they just received the Chromebooks now. And some of those Chromebooks were actually damaged. So what we look, we thought about doing was looking to put in the order sooner rather than later, especially since there's the strong possibility that on September of 2021, while the vaccine might be out there, we will still have potential for a hybrid opening. Obviously, we're also looking at additional areas where money can go. We have talked about student support, although we did have, with the reopening of the Falcons Lounge, we have been able to support the students in a number of ways with that. Other items I wanted to talk about, we are going to have a need for a quick executive session to talk about a contract. That's the end of my report.
Yeah. Thank you. Anybody have any questions for John? John Vandermonde?
Yes, I'm aware of the 4%.
John, you're not logged in because you're not, the photo's not up here and we don't hear you. So am I. I'm doing the same thing. I'm like, where the heck is he?
Hi, Auntie.
Let's see if you, Bridget, you're on.
It's on.
Yeah, you're on, Bridget.
That's on, right?
Everybody else is logged in except for John Vandermonde.
Okay, in regards to the, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
I have to see like a whole bunch of stuff. In regards to the VA's report, the tech situation where we have, we're looking to 15 additional, I mean, paying for 50 students for next year would be about $500,000. And we're talking about our surplus of $1 million. So we're not, we're really kind of cutting that back to, you know, 500,000, not a million in surplus because we're anticipating about 500,000. That's, that's kind of going out. And even in your numbers for the 17, 18 school year, it seems as though the numbers don't match up for what you have at the 17, 18 and the, and the what you proposed on the top. So just check those particular numbers. Now, one of the problems that we do have is that a lot of children are going to tech. And I propose that, I know that we do have some renovations and things on, on, on the, on the agenda for, for proposing that we do. But programs, we need to look at programs that will bring the children to Manchester Regional High School. We're developing and giving out a lot of Chromebooks. And we're developing our technologies with one-on-one, which is very, very good. But if you don't have the students to be behind them, then what's the sense in having those particular technology? So programs need to be developed with that additional funding. And I am putting, putting that request as a board member so that we have to be competitive. And that in our, in our discussion with our transition in July, that we put on the agenda, what is our next step for the next five years to try to get our enrollment up and to try to do those things that need to sustain the schools beyond us getting hit with additional bills of $500,000, $600,000 a year. Hopefully, we can go for grants. There are full-service grants that's out there. There are different grants that's out there that may create additional avenues for, we can get students in. Whether it's, you know, you guys don't like the word academy workshops or whatever, whatever it is that we need to, when a parent opens up, opens up a book or opens up a pamphlet to say, or even go on a website to look at Manchester High School, that is something that they will say that that's where they want their children to go. So in regards to that, we have to stop the heavy bleeding. I mean, at the end of the day, this is what's happening. That's all I need to say in terms of the PCTI situation.
Does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Sherapilia? Okay, moving on. Personnel, Mr. Fisher, is there anything that you have to report on?
Yes. Sorry, agenda items and an exec session.
Thank you. Finance, Mr. Battelli?
Yes, agenda items, and we do have some, some added and some revised, but that's all under, under the agenda items.
Thank you. Education, Mrs. Fusco?
As I said, we just had a short meeting about technology and, and the agenda items.
Thank you. State and county, Mr. Fisher, anything for the state?
Well, yeah, I guess the delegate assembly happened since our last meeting. And they took an hour and a half, but they did adopt the, the resolution with several revisions. That'll move forward as policy for NDA yesterday. And I don't think he was at the county meeting.
No.
So just give you a quick update there. Chris Jones, the Legislative Director, the lobbyist that NJSBA brought up a meeting that they had with Senator Sweeney, or Senator Sweeney's aide. And for the coming year, again, it seems like every five years, 10 years, regionalization and incentives are going to be pushed. The Chapter 44 and the health plans, they have identified, you know, problems with the original bill. There are some districts that are not seeing the savings that were promised in the bill. And I'll talk about that a little bit in a minute. And, and there was also, they were talking about state going forward with the S2 and how they're talking about doing a standing committee that will, on a rolling basis, review the funding formula as opposed to this every five to 10 years making a major adjustment. And they're also looking at what kind of COVID relief is going to come down from both the state and federal government. The major part of the evening was a presentation by Jason Delapena of Brown and Brown, who's a benefits consultant. He also happens to be our board's benefit, our district's benefits consultant. And they talked about the, the health benefits reform law, which is commonly known as Chapter 44. And they made a full presentation about what the impact would be, especially for those that are in the state health benefits, which is about 37% of the state, but also all of the other private carriers. And it was a very interesting, and I'm sure John has had, you know, discussions with them based on what the sign-ups were with, with our staff. But the interesting part was there's a Section 8 option, which several districts around the state are beginning to, to, to get into. And that is, is that if the, if our district does not see the savings that the bill promised and the government promised when they passed this, that there's a mandated provision that the board and the local association must open negotiations on health benefits. So after John and our consultant do analyze where we are after the elections that our staff made and what impact that will have on our savings because there's a significant decline in the deductions that are coming from our employees, which is money that was used to, to pay the benefits, which are, were under the old plan extremely costly. The newer plan is less costly if the employees opt into it. So we will be looking at that. And that's basically the report from the County Association. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Fisher, I don't know if I heard you, but they did talk about, they talked about regionalization. Didn't they say something about the regionalization?
Yes, they did.
Why can't anybody hear me? They did talk about re-
I can speak to that a little bit.
Right, regional, regionalization, and they talked also about the funding formula. So those were other two points that they made at that particular meeting.
Yeah, I didn't want to go with that. And if anybody wants it, they did. Did you get the PDF?
There is a, you got, everybody got it online.
The PowerPoint.
I could speak to the regionalization point a little bit, Bridget, if you would.
Yes, yes.
I attended a legislative meeting virtually on Saturday. And Mark Magyar, who's been very helpful to the school boards, he's been a speaker for us on several occasions. He's a member of the Senate Office of the Majority Office. And he's really, you know, very knowledgeable with legislation. What he said is that, you probably read it, is that Salem County is studying to have a county-wide school district. All Salem County. It's many small districts and they're thinking of merging into one district. I think the firm of Porzio and Bronberg is being, is hired to do that study. And there's something called LEAP funding for regionalization studies. So as you can remember, the path for progress, one of the things where the path for progress from legislature last year was regionalizing. And the point he made is that there's not going to be forced regionalization. It's going to be optional, but those questions are down the road. And if Salem County's thinking of doing it on a county-wide basis, other counties with smaller districts also may talk about it and are next. So it's something we have to watch, so.
But also, as Chris, Chris also, but also as Chris had said, that it's not going to be forced and it's going to be a little bit difficult because when you have different, smaller districts who'd like to keep control, he, this has been talked about for quite a few years, regionalization, right, John?
Yes. Yeah, and they're not going to force the issue, but there is, like I said, I think, 17 million from the state that's out there for grants that, and I think this firm is going to use some of that money for the study for Salem County. But there's other districts that are also talking about a smaller counties, 100 counties, Sussex County perhaps, that are also looking at it. So we'll have to watch out. Thank you.
Okay, let us move into personnel. Mr. Fisher, would you please move that?
You skipped over the, open the public, open to the public on agenda items.
I'm sorry.
We had the open public on the presentation.
Okay, do I have a motion open and public on agenda?
Second.
Thank you. Anyone in the public would like to address the board on agenda items only at this time? Do you see anything on your end? No, I don't either here.
Seeing none, hearing none, make a motion to close.
Second. Thank you. Now we will move into our personnel. Mr. Fisher?
Seven, one through seven, eight.
Second. Thank you, Mrs. Fusco. Any questions regarding personnel?
I had questions, which was answered, but I still have additional questions for seven, seven, two and seven, three. The adult citizens instructor and also adult ESL.
I'm sorry, I can't, we can't hear you.
Yeah.
I'm trying to look at the information and-
Yeah, I just, if you could just bring that a little closer to you.
Keep the mic with you like this, it's easier.
Yeah, so just go like this, right? Good. The questions that I had for seven, this, actually, seven, seven, two. The, and seven, three. The ESL class, they, they actually did send me information as to the outline and description of it. How many students is it with both classes, adults? Is it slated for to help with this particular one, the citizenship? What is the number slated for? And the other one is the ESL, how, I know that you ran it last year. How many parents were served last year? And, you know, does it make sense financially if, you know, if we don't have enough amount of students enrolling? So how many last year in terms of the ESL? So because you did have an ESL program last year.
I don't know if Mr. Covielo might-
Yes, I'm going to have to look into that and get back to you. And I'll have those numbers on me.
Okay.
But I was going to actually comment on that, that issue as well. And that is that we would take as many as we could get on both of those classes, the ESL and the citizenship classes. And if we need to double up and have a second night or have a second teacher, I think we would.
Well, it, it becomes, it becomes a bit, when you're doing virtual, when you say as many as possible, our, our platform handles 100 and something. So we do have to have a cutoff to actually have someone teaching someone. It becomes challenging after a certain number, so.
Traditionally, we'll know when Mr. Banta, Mr. Covielo gets those numbers.
Right. Because it's different now. They don't have to come up to the school. It's virtual, so you're logging on. So that is a different-
I think our numbers are way below that when they're, when we're in person. Virtual may increase it or may decrease it, I'm not sure.
Right.
But if it means that we need a second instructor to keep those numbers low so they're manageable, so that the-
No, and, and I, I understand that, but I just think that going, you know, the initial plan should include-
So to fully answer your question, I'll find out the numbers from last year. And of course- and of course, we do want to see the impact that a fully virtual component of this does have. You know, I have a feeling, you know, then you don't have to worry about babysitters and such, it might actually have a very positive impact, but, you know, let me get those numbers for you and get back to you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, and then for, we talked about seven four in our, our meeting, in terms of the, the actual security person, and again, we know, we understand that the other individuals did some meetings, but we wanted to further explore, you know, the cost effectiveness of, the cost effectiveness of, of these two entities, like the security company that we do use, and also in the community. Is there any particular savings that we can have with individuals doing that? And that's the only thing I have for personnel.
Does anyone else have any questions?
No, but I would just like to, on the adult citizenship and the ESL classes, just want to thank Mr. Banta for coordinating that, as he does every year. I think they're important services that we provide to the community, and thank you to instructors who work that as well.
Thank you. Mr. Serapilia, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Eric.
Yes, on everything else, but still it's there for like, for, 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 for payments of those two, two workshops that they actually did.
No one said before, did we say?
I'm sorry?
I just couldn't understand, maybe John-
You didn't understand what I said?
Yeah, we didn't hear you.
Miss this mic, I apologize. Yes, on everything else, the seven, the security 7.4, with, with us further exploring savings for that particular duties.
Okay, but are you going to yes or no?
Yes, I, I said yes.
Mrs. Fusco?
Yes.
Mr. Vander Mullen?
Yes.
Mr. Battelli?
Yes.
Mr. Pinzera?
Can't hear you.
No. You, you push the, you have the button, there you go. No, still can't hear you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Heard you.
I think they heard you. We, we need a paddle, a yes and a no side.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes, and I can't wait till we get back to the library.
Mr. Barca?
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco?
Epstein.
Mrs. Fisher?
Mrs. Fusco, would you please move education?
For eight, one through eight, seven.
You have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions regarding education?
Yes, I actually, the Q Sac, my questions were answered via email. We just, again, looking forward to our superintendent addressing those issues that we have for Q Sac, improving those, those things that we have, and, and then the technology, to make a recommendation that while we're making the technology plan, that we, again, try to have programs, technology programs, workshops, certifications for kids, so that we can make sure that we have more freshmen coming in.
I'd also like to make a comment on the educational side of things. Q Sac was a little concerning, so I know what a new superintendent, we're gonna take a look at that, I'm pretty excited about that. On the technology side, on technology plan, I would have liked to see more with a separate strategy on cybersecurity and, and student safety, as well as, you know, jumping off of what Ms. Eric said, you know, esports is real big, and it's getting bigger in, in the world today, and I think that's something that could really turn, make a spark in, in this district, and not only on the tech, technology side, but as well as, you know, there's so many other components to it that could really bring a school together, and maybe give us a spark, so just a recommendation, take a look at.
Just a question then, on that, on that technology plan, it says it's from 2019 to 2022, I'm assuming that that's revisable?
Right.
Okay, so we can then look at those issues and, and come back with it, we can approve it tonight and then come back.
Yeah, at the committee meeting, the committee considered the flexibility in the plan, and not to be too rigid, let the technology department be more flexible for further changes.
Absolutely, it needs to be fluid.
Yeah, no, they- Yeah, that, that was a purposeful move, and when not, Pat and I did sit down, that was a, a big focus of it, was being able to, as we know, technology moves instantaneously, and being able to have a plan that can encompass those changes with it, and also the programming that we'd like to move forward with, once, you know, we have an opportunity to, and take a good look at the, the big picture, and analyze it, and make recommendations that are in the best interest of our kids, so certainly, that's our intention, and, you know, comments are well taken, thank you.
I, I, we commented on it as well.
Now, though, you got a comment on Q Sac, our meeting with the Q Sac, or, okay, go ahead.
I was gonna talk about technology first, you know, in the education meeting, the, hearing the plan, and actually explain instead of just reading it, was definitely helpful, and I look forward to the, the students learning more hands-on, like you said in the meeting, it's, you know, it's very exciting, and I think it's, that also helps the school grow, and when other kids hear about it, hey, I'm actually learning something hands-on, I'm actually doing something, it becomes more of a technical, that technological feeling, you know, that they're actually seeing what they're learning. That's great.
Also, for eight, four, we have revisions of policies and new, and updates, and new policies being implemented. The challenge that I have in terms of approving this many policies and updates and different things of that nature, I know that we do have a policy committee, but, you know, we're only as strong as our weakest link. If we're having, if we're actually doing these many policies or addressing them, maybe we need to have a professional development workshop where we could just actually talk about policies and learn about policies, and why the revision and things of that nature. I did have a chance to review all policies, but we do have a young board coming on, and the recommendation just to, you know, again, educate us more on these particular policies, amendments, and updates, will be something that is, that, that will be good for our And the other thing is, does these poli, these particular policies, they're, every year they're updated, or this is, this, at this time of the year, this is where we do the updating of policies and different things of that nature, or that, these many policies, or is it something that we just do throughout the year?
If I may, we, we employ Strauss Espy, a policy service, that gives us updates throughout the year, so there's no particular time where updates of policies or new policies come out, so at any particular time, we may consider new policies or policy changes.
Right, but we have like, at least, look how many in, in a row, I mean, I just think that, again, if, if we're going to constantly, and that's, that is our responsibility to do that, review policies, vote on policies, we should have, you know, some type of training on that, again.
Comment on the policy review, as John pointed out, we do have a consultant, and most of the policy reviews, revisions that come up here are because of changes in law, changes in regulation-
Right.
Changes in, you know, because of the COVID, there's all kinds of, you've seen so many of them.
Absolutely, I do agree with that.
So it's not like it's like, in May, we, we revise policies. It's an ongoing thing throughout the year. I think Strauss Espy gives us a really good review, they give you the background, you know, for it, and, I mean, it's, it's, I agree with you, it is extremely important that every board member have a working understanding of the policy. For example, the policy that allows a senior student to continue his year that we've had as a policy, pretty much forever here, it's in our policy manual, and it's important that board members know that policy manual, study that policy manual, and review that.
Yeah.
One other thing that I'd just like to say on the Q Sac, on, on eight, one, and maybe Mr. Coviello, if he's still over in the corner, if he's still in the corner, might help me with this, but on those four sections, and obviously the score of 71 in the first section on the academic, or maybe, maybe Gary, you might be able to jump in on this too, that's not a self-scoring, that's a scoring that comes from the state based on our test scores, and unfortunately, because of the pandemic and the elimination of testing last year, we were forced, and I know Valdo, you were at the Q Sac meeting, you and I represented the board, the, because there was no testing last year, we went back to the prior year, to, to, I guess, 2018, for those test scores, which were not good. And John, maybe Mr. Coviello can explain a little better, but I understand that there were a number of improvements and projects that were put into place with the hopes that with the 2020, spring 2020 test scores, that we would have seen an improvement, and therefore Q Sac numbers would not have been so bad. Obviously, because we didn't have those tests, we didn't have the benefit of getting those new scores and possibly raising our score in that section, so while I'm not happy with the, you know, that number either, I'm hoping that as this pandemic subsides, and we get back to more normal, and maybe we do get testing, because even that, which has been a discussion at the state level, I know John's talking about, you know, whether or not, at this point, you're pushing forward with tests.
Yeah.
But that may not, that may not happen, you know.
Yeah, yeah, but, but also, when you look at the whole, the whole scope of everything, and that's what the point that I was making, and when I, when I asked about that particular score, districts that have been taken over, that actually have mandated scores that they have to do, they were at 80%. So that really, when I, when you're looking, you're comparing other districts, we need to do better, and that's, that was just my point, like, we just need to do better.
I don't think there's anybody on the board that-
And, and that's just, again, that's one board member's thing, and I've always stressed that even with our test scores, even with our, you know, whether it was our, our park scores or whatever, we, we need to start pushing, you know, you know, pushing envelope and doing, and doing better in those things.
And I think Mr. Fisher answered most of this already, but being that the test scores are not from last year, but the previous year, the supports that were put in, we don't have an indication yet of their effectiveness, and they are solid, and, and going to show positive results, in my opinion, because they do reflect a lot of the things we spoke of during my process, which are quarterly benchmark assessments, so we can get an idea of how kids are doing before that one snapshot that's taken by the state in that state test, so we have an idea of where students are, what they're doing according to the state standards, you know, targeting instruction based upon their results in those in a real-time fashion, so instead of having to wait till your spring results on the state test, you can do it after the first market year, that's the second market year, find those kids that are struggling, target your instruction towards them, and the last piece of, is having curriculum that reflects those state standards. If all those things aren't aligned, you know, whatever type of interventions that are put on or put in are not going to be effective, and those are either happening right now, and have been happening, but we don't have the, you know, the obvious test from last spring to see, you know, the effect that they had, but certainly, you know, we're hurt by using those same scores from a few years ago, but I know some really good things that Mr. Coviello and the administration and the teaching staff have been doing, are going to have positive results on our kids. You know, the pandemic, of course, is the, the wild card here, but, you know, that, that is something that we'll all be focused on in the future.
Okay, anyone else? Mr. Serapilia, please call the roll.
Mr. Barca?
Yes.
Mr. Battelli?
Yes.
Mr. Vander Mullen?
Yes.
Ms. Eric?
Yes.
Mrs. Fusco?
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco?
Yes.
Mr. Pinzera?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
And Mrs. Fisher?
Yes. Mr. Battelli, would you please move finance?
Yes, I will, for the last time.
Yes, please.
I would like to make a motion for approval on 9.1 through 9.19, with a report added to 9.4, a revision on 9.12, and a new item in 9.19.
Do I have a second?
Second, Jeff.
Thank you. Any questions regarding the finance portion? Okay. Mr. Serapilia, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Battelli?
Yes.
Mr. Pinzera?
Yes.
Ms. Eric?
Yes.
Mrs. Fusco?
Yes.
Mr. Barca?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco?
Same.
Mr. Vander Mullen?
Yes.
And Mrs. Fisher.
Yes. At this time, do we have any older new business, and what we have here is professional services?
Mr., Mr. VA sent information about the, so, professional services that we have, that currently have contracts that are up, and I wanted to make a suggestion that we review those. Some of those were, I'm sorry, my computer's not acting right.
Could you speak closer to the mic? Bridget, I'm not getting you.
John had actually sent us some, I, I made a request that he sends us the professional services that their contracts are up, or that has not been reviewed in a while. I do have the email, which actually lists those particular services. I would like to make a request that we review those, such as the school physician that we haven't, well, we just changed that in 2019, I'm sorry, about the, the auditor hasn't been reviewed, the contract, not the, have been, we haven't gone out for another auditor since 2013, the insurance agency agent since 2011, the attorney, it's been about, since 2011, you know, the special ed attorney, been about five years, the architect, all of these particular contracts have not, we haven't gone out for bids for other ones or either reviewed in terms of renewing. We need to, we need to start looking at those things, because again, we have all those extra bills that's coming up, that are, you know, so we need to not have business as usual, and just, you know, we need, you know, we were put on this particular platform to review those things, and if it hasn't been changed or, or even reviewed since 2011, then we need to start looking at that.
Of those, would you isolate on anything in particular that you would like to see bid on?
Again, 2011, the architect, the attorney, insurance agency, 2011.
So you're rolling.
It was six, it was six that was recommended, I'm sorry, it was six that was recommended, five, I'm, five I looked at, and I'm like, they're, they're, they're more than, you know, less than about 10 years, or five to seven years that we haven't reviewed them.
Well, if I could speak to that, it's not that they are not reviewed, to say that they're not reviewed would be a dereliction of my duty. The, the cost on any of those contracts is constantly reviewed, the county and my association constantly sends out information in regards to pricing for what you're paying for architect fees, what you're paying for audit fees, it is something that we are all aware of, and like I said, we do constantly, at least on a yearly basis, share that information.
Has a bid gone out, in, in terms of them?
It's not, it's not a bid, bidding is not something that would be done for a professional service. A professional service is an RFP, and RFP is not something as simple as putting out a bid, because it involves, professional services are not going with the lowest price, because simply as, as you would not want to go to the lowest-priced doctor, you would want to go to the best doctor. There are many factors that would come into play, from your attorney, from your architect, especially, you know, for your architect in terms of innovation, in terms of projects, in terms of ability to speak in front of a public, knowledge of the staff, those are all factors that go into this, so it wouldn't simply be, I would never recommend that you would simply go out and say, who's ever the lowest-priced attorney, go with, because while you'll save some, some small dollars up front-
So let me be clear, when I say bid, it wasn't about the lowest one, what I'm saying also is that the services or whatever, we still need to review them, we still need to look at them, and that's just my recommendation, and those are the things that I, that I asked for.
John, if I might as well, so certainly part of my review here, and part of my landing, is getting to know those folks. I have had the pleasure already of meeting with Mr. Harrah on that very case, getting to know him first before even bringing information to him. getting to know him first before even bringing information to him. You know, I, I think it's very important that it's known that in that opening meeting, Mr. Harrah's wealth of knowledge and knowledge of the district is an invaluable piece of someone coming like myself that wasn't through the system here at, you know, Manchester. And having an individual like that, I think, is irreplaceable, and that's just speaking to the one. But certainly in my review, those are folks that I'm going to meet and can certainly report back my feelings on as well. And I think that's an important thing to do as I get settled here, is for me to also pass on my encounters with them and my information with them and my belief in, in their capabilities. And certainly Mr. Harrah, you know, is, is one that, you know, his depth of knowledge would be hard to replace, and, and one that.
And the other one that you said was, who else? I'm sorry.
Right now, Mr. Harrah is the one I've met with. So there's other folks I'm meeting with soon that are on that list as well, but he's the first one.
And Superintendent, I, I appreciate that feedback, and that's exactly what I'm saying, just reviewing those things and making sure that those important aspects.
I definitely plan on doing it.
Do we need a motion to go out for RFPs?
Sorry, Valdo?
Do we need a motion to go out for an RFP?
Um, I don't know, but I, I don't know if you have plans on making one, but I'd really like to speak to what Gary just mentioned, because when this, we all got that email, I guess, a few weeks ago. And I know I, I replied to John, it may have been to Gary as well. I think right now, in light of the fact that Gary is just coming on the board, that to make major changes in our professionals at our January reorg meeting would be a serious mistake. I think right now, as Gary pointed out, he's going to review and evaluate, but the history and the knowledge that these professionals have of our district are invaluable to him at this point. Also, you look to change professionals when you've had problems with professionals. Mr. Harrah had a significant win for us just last year on the PCI transportation, PCTI transportation. Miss Simon, significant savings on a special ed case that we were all, you know, aware of. Our architect, if you change architects at this point, our architect know this building. You hire a new architect, you're going to pay them by the hour to learn this building. And as John pointed out, you know, these, these numbers, these fees are reviewed. You know, they're fairly common, it's almost like, in medical terms, reasonable and customary, you know, they're, they're pretty much, you know, somebody might be $5 an hour higher, $5 an hour lower. But I think when you look at these, I think at this time, making any changes would be foolhardy, because we need to give Gary the benefit of their knowledge of the district and the issues that have been faced and are ongoing facing. The other thing is, just, just a year or two ago, a, a local district went out for RFPs for at least two or three of these types of things. It takes a ton of time, okay? And what happens is after all of these, especially like architectural firms come in and make presentation after presentation, they get a little annoyed when you stay with the same guy. And, and you kind of stay with the same guy because of, they've done a great job for you. I mean, like, look at our architect, look at the, just a solar project alone, okay? But all of the other projects that we've gotten done in this building without a bond referendum, I think the Carabino is phenomenal. And, and, you know, packaging that solar, that solar project with Halden, you know, it was, it, I mean, it was a, you know, it was a home run. So I, I think at this time, I'm leaning towards what Gary is saying, and that is, you know, let's kind of like hold our ground, evaluate as the year goes on, you know, and in the future, we can look at it.
I, I, I agree to the point of what you're saying, how, you know, listen, they've, you know, Rod, he's, he's won cases for us, and I understand the, the architect and things like that. I just don't want, I don't think anyone should just feel comfortable, though, in just thinking that, hey, oh yeah, I'm good, next year, I'm, you know, I'm going to be approved. You know, like, I just, I think every so often that we do just need to reevaluate, even if we don't plan on changing.
We do.
We just need to see our options. That's, you know, that's the only thing I, I took.
That's, again, that's what participating in things like the NJ SBI workshop give you the benefit of. I, I was fully immersed in that for the three days of this year, both day and night, because the good thing was, is what I missed during the day sometimes, because there were other classes I wanted I could do at night. And I, I basically looked at every architectural firm and every attorney that was listed, that was on that, on the workshop, looked at their programs, looked at their work, actually had chat, you know, discussions with some of them. So it was, you know, I mean, what's out there in architects? There's two dozens that do, that specialize in school. Same thing with attorneys, okay? But we have, what's recognized as one of the top school law firms in the state, in Fogarty and Harrah. Seriously, when you talked in, and I know I've, we've had other attorneys here, we've had other attorneys in Halden, you know, I've seen other attorneys work around the state. A local district just made a move two years ago, they got rid of that attorney after a year, and guess what? They hired two to do the work of one, okay? And I don't know what they're paying for that. But I think you just have to be careful, and I don't think this is the time. I think with Gary, we need to let Gary make the evaluation and then move forward.
And certainly, like, when I met Mr. Harrah, I can, as I meet these folks, certainly report back.
And I'd like to thank everyone for their feedback. This is what I, I really wanted us to actually just discuss. Let's put it on a table, whether we need to review it or not to review it. So thank you for your feedback.
Well, like I said, if I could, I, I don't, I'm not against doing RFPs. I just don't want us to do five RFPs in, in a month. I mean, if it's, that we are seriously going, if, if, for instance, we do want to look at a new architect, I want to, you know, we did it at Halden, it took us about five or six months to go through the whole process, because, to be honest with you, we, if we were going out for it, I don't want it to just be, you know, necessarily for show. I mean, I understand what Valdo's saying on it, but that's why, you know, I broached the subject at the last board meeting, because I, you know, when I thought about it, you know, it is something, not so much that I think that we have to do it, but I do want to check in with the board to see if it is something, you know, if we're happy with the vendors that we currently have. You know, I could, you know, there might be one or two that I'm going to look to do anyway, just because I've gotten some wind of some, not, not anything against the vendors that we have, but, you know, things that are going on at the state. But like I said, if, if we were going to look at doing the architect, you know, when we did the, the one at Halden, we actually had it, you know, we created a subcommittee, we had them present to the subcommittee, the finalists presented to the Board of Education, and we actually had them present different proposals. So that's, that's, you know, to me, you know, we, we can certainly look at that, although, you know, it does, you know, at the time, we were able to do it in Halden partially because we didn't have any big projects that were planned for that summer. So we were, you know, we can certainly disappoint architects on a case by case basis. You know, the, the professional services are appointed just for the year, and as part of the organizational meeting, again, the organizational meeting is organizing the board, it organizes all the policies and procedures and, and the way that things are going to go. You know, the, the way that the school district is going to operate, you know, from standard operating procedures and, and the like. So like I said, I, I certainly am not against us looking at doing, I just want, you know, again, if, if we did five all at once, you know, you don't, definitely don't want to go with, with the cheapest ones. Not, not, you're not to discount them, but you know, there's, with the RFP process, it's not a bid process, it's not going with the lowest. You want to have a scoring matrix of, you know, experience, you know, recommendations from other schools. Like I said, how they present, I mean, it's, it's what you feel is the most important items for you. So, you know, I, I, again, I, I think it's, it's something that the board should periodically look at. Again, I know there's some towns that do RFPs every year, but they always award to the same school districts, so, I mean, to the same companies and same vendors. So I'm not sure if, you know, that's really a good method of, of doing it either. Like I said, the only ones that, you know, like I said, there's some that we could certainly look at, at, at doing, you know, maybe not appointing at the, at the reorg meeting or at the organizational meeting. But, you know, like I said, like I said at Halden, I always think that you definitely need to have an attorney just for somebody to consult with, because you never know what's going to be coming up. You know, I'd have to, you know, like I said, if, if we weren't going to appoint an architect of record, I would certainly recommend that if we're going to be looking at doing specific projects this summer, that we would at least appoint our current architect for those particular projects with the intent of, of looking to appoint an architect of record going forward. Because again, those, if the work that gets done in the summer, the, the pre-work gets done in, in January, February, and March, so that when the board signs off on the budget, we're immediately going out to bid, so that we can get the best pricing and, and ensure that the projects are done in a timely manner.
I think, I think it was worthy of discussion, you know, to have this discussed. And, you know, certainly would be a nightmare for you, John, and the board to do an RFP for five different firms at one time, you know, but it's, it's worthy to look at the future. But I think it's a good point for the new superintendent to get acquainted with some of these people and then move on at a different point perhaps later on.
Yeah, I tend to agree as well. I think it's, it's, it's important for Gary to get familiar and John, with your experience and your knowledge of, you know, who we've worked with in the past. But yet, at the same time, keeping things fresh is, isn't that a bad thing? So John is absolutely right, we can't do all at one time, but if we want to take some low hanging fruit and take a look at that and see what we could do, and then move forward, you know. Experience is definitely a plus, but sometimes we don't know what's out there until we go out there and see, so.
And then the other thing is, as we said before, is it possible to add to our agenda on January 11th, our next steps in looking at viable either programs or the next five-year strategy for our school?
So in terms of the strategic plan, what's, something I also talked to Kathy about. So the first thing that needs to be done is I need goals within the first 45 days, which will be tackled at her session, our transition meeting. So that's the first thing that we have to do. From that point, you know, the, the entry planner that I put together purposely has the culmination being me reporting back all the findings that I have. Those findings, I purposely timed up towards the end of the year, so that after reporting it, we can roll right into also using Kathy to organize our strategic plan, which would then kick off from that point. I think timing wise, between the pandemic, my getting settled and learning and reporting back, you know, from an outside perspective, coming into the district, can allow us all together to really put together a five-year plan that can benefit the students here. And I think that was part of why I planned it that way. I'm going to talk about that at the transition workshop, but, you know, certainly, I can tell you right now, that was the intention of having the report back being then, because then we can have some time to really dig in as a board on a strategic plan that, that addresses all those needs, and it'll be certainly one that's inclusive of the community, the school community as well as us. So, you know, things I already talked to Kathy about that I'm sure she's going to bring up at the transition workshop.
Right, right, because it's what's pertinent, that $500,000 every year, I mean, that's, that's something that's, you know, we need to plan.
Certainly.
You know, okay.
And that's what I want to do there, so it's, you know, it's not a knee jerk reaction in which I'm just seeing the surface. I want to dig in deep, be able to report back, talk to you guys, and then together, you know, let's, let's formulate it.
Absolutely.
Excellent.
Is there anything else, older new business at this time? Seeing none, do I have a motion to open to public on any item at all?
Almost.
Thank you. Would anyone like to address the board on any item at this time?
Mr. Alex Chinskey would like to address the board.
Alex, hi.
Good evening, everybody. Before I get started, I would like to wish Mr. Battelli and Mrs. Fisher, I wish them well in their retirement. Recently, the NJ SIAA has moved up the contact with winter sports, basketball and bowling, two of the sports that we have. They can actually begin virtual contact and instruction with their students beginning on Monday. We have reached out to every school in the county, and we are the only one who has still not yet approved any coaching for the students. Personally, I do coach at a different school in the county, and I was approved over a month ago for ice hockey. So that being said, beginning Monday, students from all over the county and the league are going to start working with their coaches, but not here. And we view that as a disservice, certainly to our students, who are going to miss out on all this opportunity to get a jumpstart with the rest of the schools. Thank you very much.
Alex. Anyone else? Can we ask a question? What's your question?
When he says virtual contact, what, you mean, can he explain that to me?
Alex, are you still, Ms. Chinskey, are you still there?
Yep, I'm back. The NJ SIAA, so the first phase of winter sports was supposed to be for several sorts, but for the two that we have for sports, basketball and bowling. So originally, not originally, the state pushed them back to beginning January 11th, but this week, they reached out to everyone and let them know that those schools that begin in the first part of the winter can actually begin their seasons with some sports, it's virtual instruction, with some sports, it's a combination of virtual and outdoor coaching. I believe for basketball and for bowling, it's limited to, at this point, virtual instruction, where they can certainly get their athletes trained to begin the season. But, so they've actually, they've kept the competition dates the same, but they've actually extended the season and moved it up about two or three weeks.
Right, and when you say, my, my question was virtual instruction. So if hypothetically, we're talking about bowling, what would virtual instruction mean? Like, I'm on, the person will be instructing them or giving them lessons on, you know, how do you do virtual instruction bowling?
Essentially, I mean, the coaches can do anything that they can do in a virtual manner. Certainly, we have a lot of, I coached two sports here personally, not, nothing in the winter, but we get a lot of athletes that are brand new to a sport. And certainly, if we're, you know, in the same level as the other schools, missing out on these early days, we're missing out on introducing the actual tactics of the sport to those students as well.
Okay, thank you for that clarity.
You're welcome.
Anyone else like to address the board?
No, but I, I have a question about that as well. John or Gary, have you heard anything about that? Because I'm on the NJ SIAA website right now, and I don't see any of that, those changes. Everything is still saying January 11th. Not sure where.
About virtual instruction?
I'm sorry?
About virtual instruction?
I, I, again, I'm on the NJ SIAA website. Yeah, we haven't heard anything from our athletic director reporting this. So I think we're going to need to verify.
Was I unmuted again?
Would you like to say something, Mr. Chinskey?
Sure, I'm getting it from the NJ, GenJSIAA.org. All you have to do is click on the actual sport, and then the individual sport, they give you all the important dates, including the new one, which is the first virtual contact date.
Anyone else want to speak at this time?
Seeing, hearing no one, make a motion to close.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to have a brief executive session this evening regarding shared services with the business administrator's contract with Halden.
And negotiations.
And negotiations, and we should be, how long? You feel, like, half an hour?
If that, I mean. 15 minutes.
15 minutes, okay.
It doesn't want to be so really long, because it's our last one.
No, I don't.
She's going to miss it so much.
I only get, I only give that, I only give that half an hour, because I know that, you know, Pat has to go back and say, oh, another 10 minutes.
John, is this something that I need to refrain from, or?
No, you're actually good, because it's not.
Okay. Works for me.
Not so fast.
That's a veteran move, that's a veteran move.
There you go.
Action, you know, maybe taken in, you want to send a letter back.
Okay, action may be taken. Do I have a motion to move into executive session?
I'll move it.
Okay, Cindy, thank you very much. Just wanted to say to everyone, just as board members, let's keep an open mind and take, keep training on the forefront so we all know exactly the updates and things that are going on in our state. And we should all be a part of the solution, and that's it, and peace out.
I just say.
To adjourn. Mr. Battelli, Mr. Battelli.
Can I just, can I just say that it's been a pleasure working with each and every one of you? I wish each and every one of you the best of luck, the happiest of holidays. I'm just so sorry that I didn't get a chance to work closely with our new superintendent. But just listening to him at this meeting, I I see he's going to be a big hit and a value to to Manchester and to this board. And as as our president said, you know, our main goal is to children. You keep them up front foremost, and your your job, your job is is going to be easy. So God bless each and every one of you.
Thank you.
And thank you very much, and everybody have a great holiday. Thank you. Motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
Thank you.